Now, are you gonna stop beeping? Yeah, okay.
Yeah, there you go. And just as a reminder, everybody, if we could just talk into the microphones and make them talk clearly into microphone. So that's.
Turn yours on.
Everybody.
Turn yours on.
Recording can understand what is going on. That would fabulous. Thank you, guys. And we're good.
Yeah, so we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. There is four of us present. Is anyone online? The commission? Okay, so you'll note those that are present? And I guess do we need to excuse, do an excused absence for the two that are gone?
Other.
Michael and Heather.
Yep. They, I think Mike was on his honeymoon in Europe.
Good reason.
Yeah.
Kinda, he could have.
Eightieth birthday party for her father.
Yeah. Somebody wanna make a motion to excuse those two?
I move we approve the excuse for Michael and also for Heather, please.
One second.
There we go, a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we'll move on to consideration to approve meeting minutes. We have two, eight sixteen and nine twenty. We can probably make one motion unless.
I have a comment to make. Sorry, Greg pointed out that Heather makes, sorry, Heather Bishop voted nay, not Greg. And I confirm that with Heather today.
Yeah.
We couldn't hear on the recording.
Which minute is that?
Eight sixteen.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I noticed that.
So with that one correction, does somebody wanna make a motion to approve both minutes?
Make a motion to approve the minutes of August sixteenth and September twentieth.
A second?
All right, we have a motion in a second. Those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
I should recuse on the twentieth. I wasn't here, didn't see it, didn't hear it. Does it matter?
It doesn't. I mean, you can if you'd like to, but you're approving what's in the record.
You guys, okay.
So are you abstaining or no?
No.
Okay.
No.
That's what I recently learned is that you don't have to necessarily abstain just because you weren't there. You're just you're approving the record of what occurred and but.
But you have to have read the record that occurred.
Exactly. All right, unscheduled citizen participation. You want in the audience want to speak about something not on the agenda? You're here for the agenda item? Okay. Yeah. Not yet. No, we'll be there in just a second. Conflicts of interest. Does anybody have a conflict with the one item of discussion?
Well, let me throw it out. I'm a neighbor. Is that? I'm not sure. I'm on the record. I'm a neighbor.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you have any financial interest in it?
No.
Or partnership in it?
No.
Okay. I'm fine with you.
Yep.
But I'll leave it to the rest of the commission as well.
No conflict here.
Inserted it in the, again.
Okay. Well, let's move on to the items of business. The first one is recommendation to allow a fence over the allowable eight foot height at Coker's Corner, Minor Sub, also known as sixteen eighty Sunny Side Drive.
The history of this item is that you have seen it before, however, after it was approved by the planning commission at a height no greater than eight feet and a building permit. It went on to the board and the board heard this item and the board could not approve the fourteen, did not approve the fourteen feet height, ten, ten and fourteen feet respectively. And said that if you would like, if the applicant would like to reapply at a later date, they would have to go back through the planning commission, which is what the applicant did. So for those who don't know what happened, the applicant has building a kind of secret garden in his vacant lot. We had a variance approved couple of years ago to allow a gazebo to be put on this lot as the only structure. Normally you have to have a primary structure to have the secondary style structure. But the town found it to be okay to put on this, this gazebo without a primary structure. So that was approved. That's in here, the dates in here in the packet. So the applicant had a building permit to put in a wildlife fence that's eight feet tall because you are required to have a building permit over six feet. Just in general, and so he had a building permit for that eight foot fence all the way around. And then he wanted to put a gate on the front with a kind of stone fence flanks on both sides of the gate to meet up with that game fence. The applicant, after being denied at the board for the ten and fourteen foot fence, drew up plans to do a seven foot fence with eight foot kind of end columns, as you can see in the first photo, and eleven foot around the gateway. The applicant states that the actual arch for the walkway, the doorway is eighty inches, which is, I believe, six foot eight, six foot seven and six foot eight and needs about fifteen inches or so of rock between it and the large wide rectangular stone he wants to place on top, which is another twelve inches. So that makes it around ten, ten feet. That picture is nine feet, I'm sorry. And then, and then the little flanks to the right of that go up to eleven feet. So he is hoping the compromise of instead of ten foot fence and fourteen foot columns on both sides of the gate, that if he makes seven, a seven foot fence with eleven foot columns, basically chopping everything down three feet, that hopefully he can get approval to, to build this fence. Currently, the fence is under construction, as has been discussed. However, as long as it is under the six feet, he does not require a building permit until it reaches six feet. Nor will the county issue the building license until, or the building permit until and if, only if the variance over eight feet is allowed for this section. So otherwise, the county will only issue the, the building permit for up to eight feet, basically. That makes sense.
But over six feet requires.
Yeah.
Planning commission approval?
Over eight feet requires planning commission approval. So the gate itself is at eleven feet and nine feet.
So the gate's the only thing we're looking at? He can go with an eight foot wall without any review by planning commission?
That's what our code says. You can go up to eight feet.
Gigantic wall.
Well, the two columns are eleven.
The two columns on the end are eight feet and then the actual fence is seven feet.
But the two columns on either side of the gate are eleven.
Correct.
Yeah, and that's what we're looking at.
Yes.
Okay.
And the building permit is just for anything over six. So the entire fence at this point needs a building permit. But what he has built up to this point that you see if you walk by his property is only at six feet. So he's waiting.
It's deceiving because it starts three feet above the road.
Because it's on a hill. Yes. Yep.
Okay. Any questions for Kim?
I think we addressed it last time, then.
Here, can you survey? Into the mic?
Can you move your mic forward?
Believe we addressed it last time, that there was a survey to make sure that the fence is within the property.
It is. Yeah, he had a survey from before when he had his eight foot wildlife fence. So it's, it's on the property line. It's, it's not outside of it.
And I understand it doesn't, you know, since this isn't a hearing or anything, it doesn't require to get input from neighboring people, huh?
No, no, this is a variance or the way that it's stated in the code is fences over eight feet in height shall be reviewed by the planning commission for approval or denial. It's as basic as that. That's the only thing that's keeping this from being built is the fact that it's at nine and eleven feet for that gate and the two columns next to the gate.
Other questions?
Well, just to note that from the previous one, I think the, the wall was ten feet and he's reduced it to the actual wall to seven feet and the turrets, which were fourteen feet, he's reducing down to eleven.
He's here to speak on that behalf of.
I was gonna say, are you representing the applicant?
Yes.
Okay, if you guys don't have any other questions for Kim, we can invite you up to if you'd like to address the commission.
Can you push the red button and then, can you push Tom? Yeah, and then tell us your name and address.
My name is Tom Urick. My address is one six seven County Road forty six fifty one, Grand Lake, Colorado.
Um, what?
Urrack, Y U R A C K.
I'm sorry, would you mind? I didn't bring my.
I hear, yeah.
Could you, could you speak up as loud as you can for me?
Okay. My name is Tom Urrack. I live at one six seven County Road forty six fifty one, Grand Lake. And if you had questions on how the actual wall was being construction, constructed, I could definitely answer those for you.
Thank you.
The, the gate is six foot eight, which is standard door height. That's why I went to six foot eight.
The door meaning the gate?
The gate, yes, ma'am.
Great.
Now, if we didn't put all that stuff on top of the gate, it would be okay.
Yes, ma'am. Yep.
Okay.
It's just, it's a, it's a metal frame right now and it, you know, it's, it's, it's not finished, that's, I guess. And if we made it smaller to get to the eight foot level that they're max, then you'd have to kind of step down to get in.
The, the tall lylasters beams, whatever we call them.
Yes.
On the sides. Structurally, do they need to be that tall?
I believe it's, it's not for, for structure on each side of the actual gate. The way we wanna construct the stone, it would help support that stone. It's basically, it's like belt and suspenders. We're just don't want anything to happen. That's why we're beefing up the two sides, just extra support of that stone. There's a, it's a cinder block wall with rebar, builder concrete, and then the stone is attached to that. So that would hold it, but we wanna make sure that it's not gonna go anywhere. That's basically for that extra strength.
The top of that big lentil is six feet, eight inches.
Yes, sir. That would be the bottom of the lentil.
Or the bottom of the lentil.
Right, and then the stone itself, the actual gate is six foot eight, which is just like a standard walk-in doorway in any house. And then there's, we wanna put the stone above that, six eight, and then we have a big massive stone going across.
Top of the lentil, that's nine feet from the ground level.
That's right.
It's, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Commissioner Finch was wondering about the turrets if they wasn't, you, you, you know, they need to be strong to hold their lentil in place, but anything above nine feet doesn't really add extra structural support.
More, more of the aesthetics then, so we don't, just stop right at that point. We're trying to, you know, give us some.
It'll be two feet above the top of the lentil.
Yes, sir. I believe that's what it is. Yes, sir.
Four feet above the wall.
Any other questions for the applicant? All right, thank you.
Should I push the button?
No, yeah, sure.
Let a quick question, Kim. Why did this go to Board of, Board of Trustees if the planning commission makes the decision?
I spoke with the attorney and he said that the planning commission is a recommending body.
So you can't make any decisions?
There's certain statutory things that you make decisions on.
Like the master plan.
Trustees decided to.
Okay.
Have us re-recommend.
Now, they said that he has to.
No, he denied.
They denied it.
I just wondered why it even went there, since the code says it's planning commission's a
Oh, what did the PC say last time? We denied his heights.
Denied it, yeah.
No, you approved it up to eight feet.
Up to eight.
Which is.
The maximum of eight feet all the way up.
We were specific.
But eight, well, we didn't approve anything, though. Eight feet's what's allowed.
Yeah, which is.
It's over eight.
That was the motion was the motion to over to eight feet.
Wouldn't exceed eight feet.
So. All right. Other questions? Discussion? I can say I'm not in favor of this, even if it's at eight feet, which is permitted. I just a stone wall is so out of character for anything else we have in town. Understanding we have stone walls and retaining walls that hold back earth and stuff, but this is completely out of character of Grand Lake, I, I think personally. But he can go up to eight feet, so that's great. They can still move forward with it, maybe just not at the grand scale that they were, they were initially hoping for.
I think a part of the concern that we had was the idea that it looks more like a castle gate than it does Grand Lake style.
Right.
Gates or anything like that. And if it weren't the curvature on the top of the gate, I don't think I would have so much trouble with it as as far as it being, we do have a lot of stone fences. But I think it just is so out of character with the, the character of the community. I still disagree with you.
It's, like I say, the bottom of it is three to four feet above the road, which means even with this, the top of those, whatever we're calling those things, fifteen feet high. It, it seems really imposing to me. Driving by, like you say, you're gonna feel like, oh, my God, what is that?
Yep. I think it creates more of a, of a hazard for the property because I know I found that I taught high school for a long time and I got kind of used to high school age kids. And if they couldn't see in something, they purposely tore it down to get them to see it. But if they could see something like see through the gate or maybe just a wider gate that would allow them to step up and say, okay, that's all it is and go on, they wouldn't bother.
Well, you can see, you can see through the gate. It's got his ribbon Dale crest on there.
Yeah, but it's very, very small gate, side to side. I just don't think it's, it's the character of the town.
That's John. All right, well, with that, I will entertain him.
What did he say?
He said, no comments right now. So if we're, I guess done with discussion, we can move towards a motion.
Well, this is our only chance to make a comment, so when are you gonna comment, John?
Yeah, it's either comment or we're gonna, or it's motion.
Well, we previously approved it as long as it didn't exceed you know, eight feet. And he's made some modifications to it. It is, it is a different right there on, you know, Sunnydale Hill and Grand, right on the corner there. Very visible, but as for Judy, I think, you know.
You speak up.
To the end of the rock wall and look inside.
You should do the same thing. We're gonna get little clips for.
Yeah.
Commissioners pretty soon. Clip them to the mic. They can only go back some farther.
It's kind of ah, well, I, I kind of agree. It's, it is kind of an imposing structure and different button. I think they're planning to do a good job at it and and in another respect, it could be, you know, you know, kind of an attractive thing for some people to see. Yeah, kind of almost looks like a, a gate to a castle or something. People will wonder, what's in that secret garden? What's in that secret garden? Can I visit it? So.
The other thought that I would have, I'd probably be okay with the nine feet lentil over the door. It's those two giant columns that bother me. I mean, if, if those could be brought down to the same height, so the whole thing kind of went, you know, shoulders, I, I'd be more inclined to say I could live with it. But it's so huge. Especially in that location when you're making that turn.
So if they had those turrets at the same the maximum height of the turrets at the top of the lentil.
Yeah, just a, yeah, so it'd kind of descend. You'd go nine in the middle. A little bit less on the, on there, eight, say eight feet, and then the wall is seven. So it would sort of.
Seven.
Waterfall a little bit.
And then it has two feet above the seven.
Yeah.
To be at nine feet. That seems like a reasonable compromise and idea.
The secret garden itself is gonna be unbelievable. If we ever get invited to it, it's gonna be pretty something, isn't it? It, it really is. When you plant students, see the rocks and the waterways and, oh, my God.
Gazebo and.
Yeah, so I'm trying to take that into account, that what he's doing is really good thing for town, or at least for him. But I, I agree with the chairman as he's presented it too big.
Somebody wanna make a motion?
Well, I'll make that motion that we would approve the lentil at nine. The columns at eight and the wall at seven.
And the turrets also at nine?
I'm calling the turrets, the far turrets are fine, just those.
Those are.
Two main ones.
Yeah, the main turrets, not to exceed nine feet.
He was saying eight. He's saying all the turrets at eight and the lentil in the middle at nine and the wall at seven.
Oh, the lentil can be up to nine.
Yeah.
Because it needs that space.
Has to be nine because it's sitting on top of the curve.
Yeah, but the turrets beside it, you want them lower than the lentil? Or at the top, equal with the lentil?
Yeah.
At nine feet.
It may not make sense to be lower, but it, you know.
But I think you can just approve the approve the gate for nine feet.
Remove the gate for nine feet.
Can you get that in specific? With it?
Suppose you could approve the gate at nine feet and let him figure out how he's gonna get it all to fit.
Right.
Yeah. If that's.
But just so that we're not giving a recommendation that the entire thing can be nine feet. It's that. Okay.
That's what you want?
The motion is to have that, so in abutment or post, and not. Abutment or pose, uh, ten, and not a nine eight, eight feet. The fence at seven feet. And the turrets. With the lintel not to exceed nine feet.
Well, aesthetically, they probably need to be a little higher. Do they? Try to picture that. So right now they're two feet higher.
Uh, yes. Yeah, right now they're two feet. Uh, this current submittal is two feet higher than, uh, the top of the lintel.
Was it enough to take the foot off the column? So that would, so that would be ten, the lintel would be nine, wall would be seven.
That seems, uh. Reasonable.
What do you think, James? Is that enough?
You know, I'm, I. I'm going to vote nay, no matter the motion, just again, out of the character of the. Just, it's so out of character for the, for the area, um. Uh, well, him, obviously he, he can build within the regulations and that's great, um. That's what we have regulations for, so I'm not in favor of going anything above and beyond that.
Above nine?
No, never.
About the, what the town code allows, which is.
Eight feet.
Yeah.
I would go with that.
Which basically takes the whole thing, that whole middle piece out. Well, I would amend my motion to saying that the lintel remains at nine. Nothing else can be above eight. And they'd have to figure out how to do the columns. Do them the same. I mean, I guess I'm struggling with saying eight because that. The gate plus the lintel are basically already there. Not our problem, I know.
Right. The lintel isn't up there yet.
No, the gate, this gate is there.
The gate is, is there. It's placed, yeah. He probably has the door already cut and built. Yes. And he already has the rock, but it's not up.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I think I know where James is. We don't want to be in the mode of redesigning this thing.
Yeah, I agree.
Would you like to make a motion? Or I can make a motion. Okay, I'll make a motion to deny the. Request.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
So clear discussion, so.
Oh, I apologize, yes.
So nothing can exceed eight.
Correct. So we have any further discussion?
Uh, well. Well, he did seem to, uh. Go ahead with the building without getting the approvals and he has all this equipment and all the materials and everything like that.
He. He came forward and, and had a bunch of designs and I did tell him that he could start as long as he didn't go over. The six feet, what was allowed. I, I wasn't gonna stop him and he didn't need anything, so that is why he did that. So that was under my recommendation because of the building season that we have here and ordering all the stone and everything. So he was aware that he might not be able to build it exactly how he wanted, but he would be able to build it up to. What was allowed without permits and without approvals. So that's why he did do that, so he shouldn't be. Surprised. No, he shouldn't be penalized for, for that, for just starting.
We had a motion, a second, and a discussion.
If you guys are done with discussion, I will move forward with the motion.
The discussion should be before the motion.
Yeah, as I'm gonna say, at this point, the discussion should relate just to the motion, which is a denial, recommendation of a denial. If it doesn't pass, then we, somebody else can make a motion.
Right.
Or I mean, if we.
Right.
Twenty-four of us, so.
Yeah.
So with that, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed?
Nay.
So I believe the motion carries because.
It's tied to.
It's tied.
Motion goes to, to a denial.
Yeah.
Is that, uh, two of the quorum, uh, quorum?
Yeah, there's a quorum.
There's a quorum and.
Four of us is a quorum.
Yeah.
So if it's a tie.
The motion carries.
Is carried, uh.
Yeah, and it was a denial.
Right. Okay. All right.
So your motion will be taken to the Board of Trustees on Monday and.
Right.
They will confirm. Whatever.
So you understand that? Okay, so the, so the, the planning commission recommended denial of the request. So now it'll, we go, it'll go to the Board of Trustees. The Board of Trustees will make the final decision. If the denial stands or they may approve it. As you presented it, so. Okay? Yeah, have a good night. All right, no other items of business. We'll move on. There's no items of discussion as well, so we can move to future agenda items.
Okay.
Yes, yeah, oh, yeah, I wasn't skipping.
Well, actually, I wanted to make a comment about. What we just did too.
Okay.
You know, oftentimes we have people up here who. Come from larger areas and maybe have. A bit more. Full or power. In those areas. And so they think they can go ahead and do it and then plead forgiveness. And we've had that then. We tore down one whole side of a house over on Lakeside. Because a guy did that exact thing. He came in. Got a permit to build something. Built something larger than the permit allowed. And we ended up, I think we were a, a test case in the State Supreme Court on it. And we made him tear down one whole side of a house. After it was already built. So, yes, there are times when you have to stand up for the regulations and for the people like these gals that. Tell them what the regulations are and then oftentimes they go ahead and do it anyway. And we've had some paint colors, uh. Where that's happened, somebody came in, painted their entire commercial building. God awful bluish green on a weekend. And then when we said, no, you can't do that, that's not on our color palette. They pleaded ignorance and they couldn't afford to have it painted. Again. So people will do that to us. And I think it becomes a question, do we stand by our regulations? Or do we not? And sometimes you make. You, you allow something else to happen that for good reason, but I don't think in this case it was a good reason.
So if, if he listening to some of the ideas. Were to go to the council now and say, okay, I'm gonna drop this. Besides to eight or nine or something, is he allowed to do that or does he have to go and show up with this? Can he go in there with another idea or does he have to come back here?
I was told the last time that he had to bring it back, so most likely he'll have to bring it back.
And I would hope the trustees would send it back if it's something different because they should be making the same. A decision on the exact same criteria that we're reviewing, so.
Yeah.
Doesn't mean they will, but they should.
But so the board. The trustees, uh, could just. Take our motion consideration and approve it as submitted.
Yep, they could.
They, yeah.
Yeah, they could approve it as submitted. They're not supposed to be designing it while we're standing there, though, just like we're not supposed to be designing it while we're sitting. We like to add conditions of approval, but we like to approve this, but only if you put a chimney on the left side. You know, it's like, it's.
Right.
Well, the other factor that, that I feel he misrepresents. Is all of his pictures of this beautiful aged river rock. This ain't river rock. This is a big, heavy, dark square slab.
No, that's the base slab. He's putting rock on top of that. That's the form.
Well, I don't think so.
I have photos I can show you, but, um, or you can drive by because you live next door.
He's got two pallets of that rock sitting next to my house.
Okay.
Well, again, I think, you know, the whole, the whole idea of the code is you have a code and. If you need to deviate from it, you can, but you should have really good reasoning why you're deviating from the code and. Because you want something. Or, you know.
That's the big square rock. That's the river rock he's putting upon it.
Well, these are boulders underneath these.
Those boulders are already existing.
These, my point is, these are not rounded, they're flat.
Oh, they're not round.
It's veneer.
They're not like the pictures he showed us, isn't it? I'm not saying I don't like that, but it's not like the pictures.
He, in the very last page of the materials, that's shows the pallets that he.
Right, dude.
It's on the last page of the materials.
Now they're here and they're there.
All right, well, I think, yeah, since that motion's already been made and we're on, we should probably not discuss it further. Since the applicant's representative left, so. Um.
Well, I think my biggest, biggest concern was. Using a chimney design. To justify this design. And I don't think there's any comparison because one is inside a house or in-house wall. And this is freestanding.
Well, they're not gonna look anything like.
No, absolutely not. Okay, I'm sorry.
No, you're. We have future agenda items.
Vice Chairman.
Yes, we do need to, we do need to elect somebody soon.
Because I think it's unfair for four people to make a decision for seven. When it should be the entire board. In place that makes that. I think we need to follow the rules and have a chairman and a vice chairman and. Play by the rules.
Oh, sorry, you lost me. So having a vice chair isn't gonna have three other people here, is it?
It will have a vice chair and two other people.
If, well, if they're in attendance.
Yeah. So it's tough when they're not in, in attendance and that's why. The process was set up that there are certain reasons why you approve. Uh, an absence and you don't. Because we at one time on the board had. If my next door neighbor and I didn't want to. Want to make mad. They wouldn't come, so they wouldn't have to vote on it. And that's not fair to the four or remaining people that are here.
So I'm brave now, is what you're saying.
What the role of a vice chair is just to act in the absence of the chairman.
And to be here and vote otherwise. So are we gonna move forward with that process or?
Yeah, I mean, I think we just gotta. We should wait until we have all six members here and then.
No, anybody that's not here is elected.
That works as well.
It's usually how it works, right?
Sure choice of how it works.
If you're gonna make a motion, I'd, I'd certainly recommend Heather. She seems like.
Well, and I think she's been doing an excellent job. I would second that, but, um.
Yeah, you should definitely do that. That's what you did last time. I think you did that to James the last time he came back and he was all of a sudden vice chair.
Right.
That's what happened, so you can probably do that to Heather and it would be.
Well, and, and I think the only concern with that is that because her husband is on the Board of Trustees. Are there times or conflicts when that, that, that might appear that shouldn't?
He can abstain, but I don't know why.
Yeah.
Yeah. Because it's a recommending, not a.
Right.
Yeah.
We don't make any decisions.
Well, I think the same thing would be of Michael. I think Michael would be. Good, maybe down the line when he's a little more experienced. But he would have the same conflict. Cause he's on the Board of Trustees and he's on the Planning Commission.
Right.
Both should he be placed in that position, so.
I wouldn't be, I wouldn't object to being considered for that.
Yeah, well, I'd say when we get a full board or a full commission together, then we can have that discussion and.
Have an applicant.
We have an applicant.
Yeah.
But I still think we should have at least try and get the full commission together to have that discussion, so.
Recruit your neighbors.
Sorry, we still need, we still need number seven, so. Any other topics of discussion?
Uh, I was talking with, uh. Kim earlier about, uh, we approved that variance on, uh.
Over four portal. Or the, um.
Retaining?
Retaining well.
Retaining well, structural, yeah, uh. What was it, eight feet? Like that, yeah, but anyhow, yeah, we approved that, but then, uh. Trustees. Uh, didn't approve the variance and.
They tabled the motion.
Oh, they tabled it. And also expressed that the grade of the driveway.
Yeah, when she was here. It came up. I didn't know we were still, yeah. So when she was here. It came up that the driveway was over the allowed grade. To be a driveway. So she's getting a topo of it so that she can submit that. And request a variance on her grade of her driveway as well. So instead of just piecemealing it. At each meeting, requesting and approving one thing at each meeting. We have to re-notice everyone once she gets that topo to me and she emailed me yesterday and said she's still waiting, so.
And the encroachment into the road right away on portal is not. A matter of the planning. Commission.
It's not.
And. Is. It, uh, did the trustee say anything about that or?
It's all going at the same time when we re-notice everything.
Okay.
So if one doesn't pass, it doesn't necessarily. Like. Yeah, they all three need to pass.
Is there something going on with the approval we gave the rapids?
What approval?
Well, what were we doing? We were approving their bat, changing the zoning back.
I think that's all been done.
Yeah, what do you, you mean the eight pack of apartments?
Yeah, I think.
Yeah, when they came in.
I went to the, I went to the theater on Saturday and guess who I sat next to?
No idea.
Your favorite attorney.
Which one?
Oh, he was here.
We have one favorite attorney.
Oh.
I only have one real favorite.
Can borrow your pen?
Oh, I'm sorry.
So not, while we're talking.
Not that we know of, Kim, then?
So, you know, we approved the.
We already approved all of that.
Units, uh, for the.
Eight unit, no, she's complaining about the deck probably, but I'm not allowed to discuss because it's being dealt with.
Okay, so. We can. Further that discussion if we want, but is there any other future agenda items? At this point?
Well, it sounds like she's bringing a back or something, I don't know.
I have not received anything from anyone.
Me about it, I go, you know, like, no.
Yeah.
I don't wanna hear about it from you.
Wow. Wow, that's neat.
You said she.
I have a lot of.
I would say one future agenda item to bring up is a fence because. That's kind of concerning that people can build an eight foot. Actually, wall.
Yeah, cuz.
On their property and we have no say over. The character or anything like that and. That's just. Not good for wildlife movement, not good for.
Yeah.
A welcoming community, so.
Seen.
Seen accused or anything, so I think that'd be a great future item to bring back.
Yeah, because the allowable materials on a fence are stone. Or wood. And that's pretty much all it says. It doesn't say it has to be X number of like. Visible.
Solid avoid ratio or any.
Yeah, no, none of that.
So it might be time to revisit that because.
If anybody has any good. If anybody has any good definitions they would like to.
I'll send you ours in Winter Park.
Think it's great, then let's do it. Because I'm tired of seeing privacy fences all over our town as well, and I'd like to rather see the. Uh, buckrail fences with, say, the mesh or something, if they wanna keep their dogs in, so that the animals can still jump over and we still keep the character. Rather than these eight foot privacy fences.
Right, I would say, um.
Cutting our backyards.
Yeah, and we, we have very specific requirements, limited based on the size of the lot, things like that. I can say somebody took advantage of ours and. Built a nice split rail fence and it looks great, but our council's all up in arms already about it, so.
Because it.
They just don't want, they just don't want fences.
Oh, at all.
Yeah, is it just, again.
Yeah.
Takes that character away of. More opening self.
Plan community, right, they don't allow fences.
Right, 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 so. Anyways, future topic item. With that, any? Further discussion, if not, motion to adjourn? Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Alright, meeting is adjourned.